I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Cork will now read the statement of meeting procedures, please.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Monday, October 18th, 2010. Agendas are available on the chair in the back of this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Any members of the public wish to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Before we begin, our first item on the agenda, we have a request by county council to add an item to closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subsequent to the publication of the agenda, I became aware of some information that puts the county at risk of significant exposure. And under Government Code Section 54956.9, Subparagraph B, I would like the board to add something to closed session item, it would be item number C, under your item number five on page two, anticipated litigation. It does require a vote.
Okay, we have a motion Supervisor Holm, second Supervisor Rockholm, to add the item. It does require a four-fifths vote, so roll call, please.
Holm?
Yes.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Hi. All right, thank you very much. The agenda is so modified, and we do have a minute or two before our first timed items. Why don't we go ahead, Mr. Kratz? We'll go ahead and take your item. This is Public Works, Lake Tahoe Capital Improvement Project Program's status information item only, no action requests of the board.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Peter Kratz again, Deputy Director of Public Works. And give me a second here and we'll get our presentation up and running. Over on the, to the right. There you go. Let's see. All right, here again to present an update for you for Public Works for all the things that we're doing up in the basin and eastern Placer County. A lot of things going on for Public Works this year. I'd call it a watershed year, kind of going back in time a little bit since 1984. Public Works has built over 50 erosion control projects up in the basin. And up this year, we've actually have seven on the ground. You had a chance to tour a few of them today, two of them, the Lake Forest Erosion Control Project and the Transit Center. So that's two of what we've been doing out of seven this year. Just to take you through my outline real quick today is to, again, update you on the board on what we're doing and kind of go back 25 years when we started this whole process and highlight the projects currently under construction and emphasize really the partnering that we do up here to make these projects work, not just from regulatorily, but obviously the funding. All of these projects are pretty much 90 percent plus funded from grant sources. We do use some traffic impact fees to build some of these projects, but for the most part, California Tahoe Conservancy, U.S. Forest Service, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, cobbling a lot of funding sources, working together and working with the agencies to make these projects happen. And really talk about at the end, emphasize that the future does remain bright even under these economic times that we're in. Federal funding and state funding continues to occur. The emphasis on Lake Tahoe clarity is a big, big for us up here, as you'll hear from other agencies today, I'm sure. Quickly, the seven projects we've got under construction this summer are up there with their various construction budgets. The numbers are a little bit higher on the construction budget side, like today you heard Lake Forest was 3.2 million. I didn't account for a lot of the construction management time that goes into watching over these projects and doing the construction inspection. So we really, we have projects going from Nevada State Line over in Kings Beach all the way over almost to Tohoma along the west shore, where you see the McKinney Rubicon Trail Enhancement Project. And what I like to do is just highlight these projects through some photos from here through the rest of the presentation. The first one off to the east side near the state line that you didn't see today, but it's in the grid part, the residential part of Kings Beach, it's called the Fox Clean Water Pipe Project. It's a $2.2 million construction budget. It's actually near one of the Domus redevelopment sites, near the warming, the house warming that you went to was off to the west. This one is near one of the three sites, the second site of Domus. And it was really a partnering effort too with both the North Tahoe PUD and Domus. They've got some of their improvements right on this street, on Fox, that we are actually doing some of their improvements and being able to tie their stormwater into our main infrastructure, so a great opportunity there. Typically with these kinds of projects with the PUDs, we work with the PUDs ahead of time to make sure that if they've got aging infrastructure or they need to do things, we go, we let them go in there while we're ripping the streets up, so we're not ripping up the streets up over and over again by different agencies. So this probably, this project this summer is probably the most impactful to the community because it's a real tight neighborhood back there. A lot of people walk around. We have a fairly challenging contractor. We're getting the job done though. You didn't have a chance to get over here, but this is Fox. And on Fox and then on Salmon, we actually have new roads, new pavement. That's about a mile of pipeline that was constructed from the top of the neighborhood all the way down to the lake. And the idea is, and we've mentioned this before to your board, is taking all the clean stormwater above the neighborhood and piping it underground all the way to the lake, so it doesn't mix with all the dirty urban water in the grid. And that reduces the hydraulic load and makes our job easier. When we do our commercial core project, we're treating less water, we're treating the bad water in a smaller volume of it. Our next project, moving to the west, is what you saw today a little bit on our tour, the Lake Forest Erosion Control Project, $2.9 million project budget. Like we've talked, innovative and multi-benignicial stream environment zone restoration effort. Again, just highlighting what we did up there, there was a creek, there is a creek known as Lake Forest Creek that was piped underground back in the 60s during some development of what's called the Lake Forest Glen condominium development. And it really dried out the meadow area, one of the few big meadow areas that we have in Placer County. And so we took the opportunity over the last several years of planning to establish partnerships with the Conservancy for funding, it's mostly their land out in this meadow, and really go forth with a neat restoration project, which is a little bit different than we typically do where we're in the streets doing curb and gutter. And I think all of you had a chance to see some of this. And these are just some shots from the beginning, up at the top, where you see just the channel being constructed with no vegetation, and then the vegetation mats coming in, and then the sod, which much of the sod is salvaged from existing vegetation in the area and relocated. So a really neat project for us, and it also adds an element of recreation and pedestrian access and flood control, which is a big thing for this project as well. Our next project, Tahoe City Transit Center, you saw this today as well, some construction photos here from back at the beginning of site grading earlier this year. The pad down here that you saw close up, a lot more to it now that you saw about an hour ago with the heated pad that we'll have for snow melt, the green facility that we talked about with photovoltaic cells on the roof, harvesting the precipitation for irrigation and for the toilets. And then really back to what this project is all about, it's a strategic location of existing hiking trails, bike routes, and within walking distance of Tahoe City. It's got the 130 space parking lot for transit riders, plus people that really just come to Tahoe City and want to either hike, bike, walk, and enjoy the community off to the west, or off to the east, rather. $4.7 million construction budget, obviously encourages bus riders and enhances our overall TART bus transit system throughout the north shore and west shore, and that links into Truckee and Washoe County as well. Couple other shots here, we're very sensitive, of course, with all of our projects of protecting the existing vegetation around the site, as you saw out there today on your tour and some shots here, just showing how we have to protect a lot of things out there. And our tree take was as minimal as we can be. Again, a small footprint over a big chunk of forest there known as the 64-acre plot that's owned by the Forest Service, two and a half acre over, total footprint includes the building, the bus turnaround area and the parking lot. And just to note that, you know, part of our schedule's been slowed up a bit on construction. We kind of knew this going in, but it's not a pristine site. There was a form, there was former development there. In fact, old landfill sites where the ground was very soft, where we pulled out old bottles, old historical stuff, we have to have an archaeologist on site to check this stuff out. That slowed us down a little bit, a lot of soft ground that we've had to overexcavate and recompact to get a sturdy surface out there. And then just kind of context where we are, you guys were all, and ladies were all standing about here, looking at the depot site, the parking lot behind there, and you've got to get a sense of, there is a big land, a chunk of land out there that's really going to remain open space with bike trails that run through there and make their way over to Tahoe City and to the west shore along existing bike, class one bike routes. And again, a little bit closer up, we're over in this area, standing on our former tour, turnaround area, parking lot area, and the remaining open space. You saw this, I think, on a handout, just a typical cross section of what the finished product will look like out at the Transit Center. And some perspectives here of daytime, wintertime, and I think how it'll look at night. Moving on, a project you didn't have a chance to see today, but another one we're very proud of, it's called the West Sunnyside Erosion Control Project, $1.7 million budget, really provides both flood control and water quality improvements in Ward Canyon. There's a subdivision known as Talmont, which is up on a very steep-sided topography, built back in the 60s without a lot of thought of how the water flows off the Talmont subdivision in a very uncontrolled manner, a lot of big heavy erosion we've experienced over the last, ever since it was built. And we're finally addressing it through this project, which is a very large detention basin, being constructed here in, again, a Conservancy-owned property that we then transformed it into this basin, which is now completed. It takes about 1,000 feet of pipeline from the Talmont subdivision above this area and routes the stormwater down into this basin in here and provides downstream flood control because we have a lot of development down here before the water reaches Ward Creek. So again, more of a classic erosion control effort, but one that we're very proud of, that we took the opportunity of using Conservancy land to deal with this uncontrolled runoff and flooding that occurs in this area. Moving on, back to TART a little bit, what we've been engaging in in the last couple of years is really looking at our bus shelter system, the fact that we don't have a lot of bus shelters in many places and ones that are dilapidated. And since last year, we've built, we're up to building six now, either replacing old ones or putting in new ones where we didn't have a shelter before. So here's a quick snapshot of where we are last year. We've got the two in Squaw Valley that you may have seen that were built last year. And then this year, just down the road to the south of us, we have two in the Sunnyside area that are about done. We have another one in the Lake Forest area you might have seen as you traveled from Kings Beach in this direction. And then one over on National Avenue in Tahoe Vista, which is a very busy site that's actually being, we're partnering with the NTPUD, North Tahoe PUD, on their recreation site by the lake. And this program will continue. We're very fortunate to have such a solid relationship with the North Tahoe Resort Association to get funding for this program. Moving on to up on the summit outside the basin quickly, we're in the middle of doing the Donner Summit Slope Rehabilitation Project with a $395,000 budget. It's a treatment of an old road cut made when they built the highway way back when with a 65-high eroding cut that sheds a lot of sediment into the South Yuba River watershed. And you can see some photos here before, get a sense of this huge cut that you can see from all over the place if you're skiing at Sugar Bowl or accessing that area right off the highway. And these are some shots now of stabilizing that slope, building a rock wall system with drainage behind there, and then this will follow up with vegetation and really reduce the sediment load that's impacting the South Yuba River. And this was funded through the Sierra Nevada Conservancy grant, and we look to do more up there. And if you have a chance, when you go back down the hill to Auburn, you can go out on Old Highway 40 and take a look at what's going on up there. And then finally, our final project is really kind of a long-term maintenance effort that we do in what's called the McKinney Rubicon Recreation Trail. We've come to your board before on how we interface with the Forest Service. Most of this trail is on Forest Service land, but it's a trail that we did improvements on way back in the early 90s for water quality protection of Lake Tahoe. It's an ongoing effort. We have a lot of four-wheel-drive user groups that love to use this trail, and we have a couple of groups that are very proactive and wanting to educate users and making sure they stay on the trail. And we look for opportunities to continue to work with this group and do things like fill in major potholes like this that fill in with water and cause erosion. This is an aftershock of this section where we filled in with some fill. This is fill that actually came from, I think, our Lake Forest project. We had a lot of excess material from Lake Forest and some of our other projects, and so instead of sending it to the landfill, essentially used this excess fill and hauled it up to the McKinney Rubicon site to do these improvements. And a final shot there is just, here's before, big ponded area, and this is the same shot, same perspective filled in with fill, same here, this is a big ponded area and filled in. And then just moving on from all the projects we've been doing this summer, heard a lot about this, came to your board a few weeks ago to get our contract signed, our design contract. Obviously, our biggest notable contract in, or project in design right now, the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. We had a kickoff meeting with the consultants last week to schedule everything, hope to break ground on this project next summer, probably not on the highway, but do some of the grid improvements affiliated with this project. So we're very excited about the future, this type project. And another project of note is the North Tahoe Bike Trail Project, which is about an eight-mile section between here and our Dollar Point and downtown, or the regional park at National Avenue. So it's a new project, another notable project for Public Works to carry on and do these types of improvement projects in the basin. And a final note, just to say, a lot of partners for Public Works that we work with continually in the basin, this is most of them. There are more, what I probably don't have up here, what I should is the Tahoe City Downtown Association. But these folks are either, and sometimes a combination of regulatory, funding, and just advocates for our projects. And without the partnerships that we've built over time here, we just, I wouldn't be here today talking about seven projects happening all at once. So with that, happy, very proud to be here in front of you, to give you a snapshot and update on everything that we're doing up here in Placer County. Our group of engineers is very proud of what we do. We take everything seriously. We want to build good projects and keep the community happy, so, and keep the lake clear and move in that, continue to move in that direction. With that, happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any board members have any questions, Peter, on any of our capital improvement projects? All right, seeing none, this is not an action item, no actions requested of the board today. However, if any members of the public have any questions or comments on any of these projects, be happy to take those now as well. All right, seeing none, thank you very much, Peter, for your report.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and move on to our 2:40 timed item. We're going to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Placer County Planning and Redevelopment, excuse me, just Placer County Redevelopment Agency. And here a report from Mr. Laboue on the status of North Lake Tahoe redevelopment project area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Redevelopment Agency. Can you hear it?
Yeah.
I'm going to give you an overview of the most active projects, the main activities going on. But before that, I wanted to just point out a little description of, part of the work that we're doing right now is really examining our budgets and our finances. In November, we're planning to bring you the final budget for this year, and getting ready for that, we're getting the numbers ready to be able to make that presentation. So everything that we're doing, we are doing in the context of how do we pay for all this? So that is especially an issue this year because of certain things that have been happening in the last year or two. The first one, many competing project demands, that's not a new issue. We've been dealing with that for some time, but the list keeps growing. We have a wish list of projects at different organizations, different individuals, different property owners, and ourselves, sometimes we dream up these things ourselves, keep coming up with, and they're, and most of them are very good ideas, very good proposals that would indeed improve the area here in our North Tahoe redevelopment project areas, but can't pay for everything. This year, we are seeing, as the final numbers have recently come in, that for the first time in our history, our tax increment revenue has actually declined. That's never happened before. In the early years, obviously, we didn't have much, so even an increase didn't, you know, we still didn't have much. But now that we've built up some reserves and we were able to issue bonds in 2006, we've been taking on more implementation responsibilities and doing more, spending more, of course, but now for the first time seeing that the curve doesn't forever go up. This year, it's going down. In North Tahoe, the decline is not dramatic, it's less than 5 percent. Other areas, the decline, Sunset Area in particular, it's going down more. And we will be presenting additional information, like I said, to you with the final budget. CRAF, the state came up with this wonderful acronym to, as a way to get at our revenues. So between last year, we gave to the state over $3.2 million of commercial tax increment funds, about $2.3 million of that came from the North Tahoe area. This year, we're, by next May, we're due to pay them another $670,000 or so. So it just puts a challenge that with everything we're doing, we need to be really looking at the numbers and seeing what can we afford and how do we go about this in a smart way? So we have adopted certain strategies. We are continuing to support the projects that your board has approved up till now, and we have not ditched any significant projects for lack of funding, and we are continuing with those. Some of the main ones, as you know, you've already committed $11 million to the CCIP project in Kings Beach, and those funds are still being set aside and held for that purpose and other projects in the works. You're going to hear about a number of them tomorrow with action items on your agenda. We have economized on operations. We have a couple of vacant staff positions that we've held vacant for over a year now, and we will continue to do so and look for ways to do more with less. Selectively support new initiatives. We get proposals all the time, and there may be some that you decide that you do want us to invest in in the future, and that may be possible, but we do have to be selective and think about that. Where we do have some available funds is in our bond, our commercial bond for North Tahoe, where we have approximately $3 million that's not spoken for. Pursue outside grants and partnerships. We've been very aggressive with this approach, and we have been successful in a number of areas in Tahoe as well as in North Auburn, receiving grants from the state. And in some cases, we've gotten some loans on very good terms, such as from IBank, and we can, we will continue to look at those opportunities. And then consider financing options. It may behoove us to get creative in terms of how to use our funds wisely. I think there's going to be an item on your agenda tomorrow about borrowing funds from one project area for, which has a surplus at the current time. We'll need the funds in the future, but not immediately, and having another project area which has a more immediate need, borrow those funds, pay them back with interest by the time that those funds are needed. We do want to, going back a little bit to the supporting new initiatives, we do want to think about how we can, in an intelligent way, leverage our funds. We like to do our projects in conjunction with other agencies, similar to Public Works. We do projects, and you're going to see one tomorrow with the PUD, another one with a property owner developer, and we do other projects with other agencies. We want to, when the CCIP is completed, we're very interested in following that up with an initiative to encourage and assist private property owners and businesses to also do improvements along that stretch of Highway 28 in Kings Beach. And so we're trying to squirrel away some funds right now and plan about how we can do that, so that program could be an aggressive program to really make a big impact on that overall community's revitalization and building upon the public improvement of Highway 28. Now to the projects. This is a project we just completed this year, two gateway signs to Tahoe City, both on Highway 88, 89, I'm sorry, from different approaches into Tahoe City. It was mentioned that the sign on the left, the landscaping looks unfinished, but Caltrans is providing, is hydroseating that, what looks like burlap netting on the slopes for erosion control, and vegetation is going to be growing that with the rains and the snows next spring. The Transit Cedar Center, Peter already talked about this, the Redevelopment Agency contributed $500,000 to this project. Those funds were spent on design and engineering work to help the project get started in the earlier phases. You're going to be seeing an action tomorrow to enter into an agreement with the PUD for improvements to the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area. This area is along National Avenue, this is Highway 28, the lake is over here, and you'll be getting more of a report on this. But this is what is our funding, $500,000, which actually you've already approved in your budget, would be going towards, providing additional parking and transit stop and other related improvements. We have an existing commercial loan program, and in the last year, we've made two loans. On the left is the Brockway Golf Course. We helped them replace dilapidated running rail fence, which is a big improvement visually right now. And then Morelottis Lakeshore Resort, we provided them facade loan, which they have used to put in new electronic locks and lighting. Dear Rainbow Parking Lot, we just entered into, you approved an agreement between us and Public Works a few meetings ago, where Public Works is going to be taking over the management of this project, and they're just beginning the initial steps of designing the project for building both the parking lot and over here, this is going to be an area for drainage to capture water and come down this tail of the site alongside a wooded pedestrian trail, would be a nice feature. BBLLC, there's an action on your board agenda tomorrow as well. This project is moving forward again, it was stalled for a while. They were having issues first with TRPA and the consultant to do the EIR, and then with their financing, and we've been working with the developer and with the banks who have the first mortgages on this property to come up with a new financing plan to keep this project moving ahead. They have restarted the EIR, EIS work, and that's moving along. Everett Property, you have an item on your agenda tomorrow on this one. The Everett Property is here along the south side of Highway 28. This is Coon Street, Fox Street, Chipmunk Street, and we have acquired- Chipmunk Street, and we have acquired this site, the redevelopment agency owns it, and we have two projects planned. On the bottom part, nearer to the lake, it's planned for public parking, which would help both the CCIP project mitigate the loss of parking with that project, as well as just to help the overall commercial district. And on the northern portion of the property, we're proposing to issue RFPs to get proposals from developers to build a relatively small mixed-use project. We will see once we get proposals if you want to authorize that tomorrow. Eastern Gateway, also on that same block, at the far eastern end of that block, at the corner of 28, and Chipmunk Street, Catty Corner from the Domus Housing Site, we have acquired through multiple purchases, about 1.3 acres. We've gone through a series of community meetings, you'll be hearing more about that tomorrow as well, and we're now proposing to issue an RFP to get development proposals from that. And the ceremony you were at this morning, this is what you didn't see, which what you would have seen a few weeks ago if you were on that deer site, an old rundown motel converted into permanent housing that had definitely gone past its useful lifespan. We've been very active, this has been largely a summer of demolition, we've been knocking down a lot of buildings on multiple sites for both the Domus Project and also the Eastern Gateway Site, and all the demolition work is now completed, the sites are all buttoned up and BMP'd, ready for the fall and winter weather. Domus Project has reached two milestones in addition this summer. One, they were able to get full permits and do enough construction on two of the five sites, Fox and Brook, to be able to pour the foundations and actually work through the winter. The other three sites will need to wait till next May, next spring, to be able to start that construction work. The other milestone reached is that we just had a closing a little over a week ago, which was a very important step. It brought in about $15 million of construction funding from Wells Fargo Bank, it brought in the eventual, about $18 million of permanent money coming from the tax credit investor, and it also resulted in us transferring the property, the title to the property, all five sites, from us, the redevelopment agency, to the developer. So, we're no longer the proud owners of this blighted property, but it won't be blighted for long, it's already getting improved, and that's what it's going to become for the sites. We also have housing programs, both first-time homebuyer assistance loans and housing rehab loans. In the past year or so, we have done two rehab loans in the North Tahoe area, the one on the right is Beaver Street, a project that the PUD was also working in coordination with Public Works to do improvements on Beaver Street, they put in a new main waterline, and as a result, the individual houses on that street needed to tie into that line. There was one household in particular that was low income, had a difficulty affording that tie-in, and we provided a deferred loan, payment loan assisting them. And then on Bend Avenue, we're in the process of finishing up a rehabilitation project, which they were able to get a favorable loan from us as well. That completes the report.
Questions by board members, Mr. Laboue, on any of the projects? All right, seeing none, again, this is not an action item for the redevelopment agency today, however, if any member of the public wishes to address the board on anything that's been presented, we'll take that now. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn as the Placer County Redevelopment Board and reconvene as Placer County Board of Supervisors in order to take up our 10, our 250 timed item, which is a report by the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association in regard to annual activities. Ms. Merchant, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office. Thank you. As you're aware, your board authorizes an annual agreement with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association to make recommendations regarding allocation of TOT revenues for funding infrastructure projects, various visitor services, and to implement marketing programs that benefit tourism development. The fiscal year 2010 and 2011 agreement was approved by your board on September 14th in the amount of $4,177,215. The Resort Association has prepared an annual report for you today, as required in their contract of services. It will be presented today by interim executive director Ron Trebus and tourism director Andy Chapman, who are both accompanied by several other key staff here today they may want to introduce to you, and I will be available after their report should you have any additional questions. Till then, here's Ron.
Ron? I think you're up.
Yeah, it's Ron. You're ready. Thank you all very much. I had suggested to Jennifer that we do this presentation about 5 o'clock this afternoon.
That's the slightly embellished presentation that takes place at 5.
Right, but we can handle any questions or other concerns at that time. As always, we appreciate this opportunity to speak directly to you after we've had particularly such a successful consummation of the 2010-11 agreement, which is the 16th year that Placer County and the Resort Association will have been working together for the benefit of Eastern Placer County. I would like to take a moment here at the start to introduce our board president, Alex Morelatos, who is here, and our very active board member, Jennifer Merchant, which I'm sure you all realize she's on the board, but I realize it too. And then, in addition to that, though, I did ask our staff that was available today to come over when they, when we were speaking this morning, and they said they really hadn't known who the board of supervisors were or ever met them, I assumed then you hadn't met the staff. So, at this time, if you guys would just stand up, and I will from the back introduce Anna Atwood, who is our conference sales administrative assistant, and next to Anna is Emily Sullivan, marketing and chamber administrative assistant, and then Kim Lambert, who is an accounting and executive administrator, Jeremy Jacobson, who handles all of our leisure sales clear around the globe, and then Sally Lyon, who is our chief financial officer and human resources person, and of course, Andy Chapman, our director of tourism and chamber advisor, not with us today, or Kim Fable, our chamber director, Jason Neary, who handles our conference sales, and Shelley Webb and Dana Hurlicy, who run our visitor center, and that's where they better be this afternoon.
Judy.
Judy Laverdy, is she here? Judy is our special projects and special events coordinator, and is a person who's been with the Resort Association for many years and continues to do just a bang-up job with every special need that we have.
All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Well, while we are only 12 employees strong, we do reach far and wide through the community and beyond, interacting with organizations, agencies, businesses, and the public to achieve our mission, which is really to promote tourism and benefit business through efforts that enhance the economic, environmental, recreational, and culture, cultural climate of the greater North Lake Tahoe area. Our main charge is to work closely with Placer County, providing you all with the outreach necessary to really ensure that proper expenditure of TOT funds for tourism development in North Lake Tahoe and Eastern Placer County takes place. Our second charge, which isn't directly related to you, but you should be aware of, is that as the North Lake Tahoe Chamber of Commerce, we promote and support business retention, economic sustainability, and stronger business community relationships and development. Our over 640 association chamber members have the responsibility to, one, elect the Resort Association Chamber Board of Directors, serve on that Board of Directors, serve on the Resort Association's multiple citizen committees that advise the board in its decision-making processes, and then attend the educational and social functions designed to achieve the purposes for which the organization was formed. And lastly, they raise funding for the chamber in that the Chamber of Commerce is not utilizing TOT funds. As defined in our annual agreement with Placer County, the Resort Association works to improve tourism development to increase our main objective of putting more heads on beds. This occurs really in three ways. One, bringing new visitors to the area. A second is that visitors stay longer once they're here because of the facilities that are available. And third then, of course, and probably just as important, if not more important, that visitors return to this area when they are going to celebrate their next vacation, conference, or meeting. After a record year in TOT collections in '07 and '08, there was this general economic downturn, of course, in '08, '09, and the TOTs dropped not real significantly, but significantly for the situation we had been in, where there hadn't been a drop in TOE Ts, always going up. But as we moved into the winter of last year, after a first quarter of '09, '10 kind of continued the same trend, we, the TOT collection started to level out, and once again, as the winter and the spring came through, headed upward with a very good ending to the year. In fact, I don't have the actual finals, but it looks like it's probably the second-best TOT year ever. To keep those heads coming, to fill those beds, requires our coordinated effort of tourism activities, visitor services, and capital improvements in tourism relating to infrastructure development. These tourism activities, which we have provided this last year, include marketing and promotion, which is a variety of print media insertions, radio campaigns, the Snow Trigger Program, which gave us the opportunity, as the weather changed, to change our ability to advertise what was happening on the ground here at North Lake Tahoe, our year-round travel planners, the AAA Tour Book, the internet services that we offer, and the web campaigns. Then we have our cooperative marketing programs, which we do, which is working with the Wedding and Honeymoon Association, regional marketing committees, Hotel Travel Index, Mountain Travel Research Project, the California Snow Program, as well as the North Lake Tahoe San Diego Winter Ski Campaign that we did last year that was highly successful in bringing many San Diego ones up here. Fortunately, not the Padres. In our public, I don't know where it comes from. In our public relations, we handle just a multitude of press releases to keep people aware of what's happening at the moment up here. We handle media inquiries from all over the world, we host visiting journalists, and also sending press kit materials to really pique the interest of people that are then considering and coming to North Lake Tahoe. In our special events and projects that I just spoke about with Judy being an active participant in this, we actively partner with and support various ongoing and first-time events through our community grants programs, where small organizations and new groups can apply for funding to try to get a new event off the ground. And then we provide marketing and funding assistance to the five business associations of North Lake Tahoe. We get certain events that we're behind, we not only provide funding, but do promotion for them, this year's new ones being the Quicksilver Tahoe Stand-Up Paddleboard Festival. We participated in the 50th anniversary of the Olympic Heritage Celebration. Snow Fest is a continuing event that we sponsor, and this coming spring will be its 30th year of being a part of the North Lake Tahoe scene. We then also do some development of resort association-produced events, such as this summer's High Notes, which was a regional-wide music promotion, and of course, the 25th Annual Autumn Food and Wine Festival that occurred in September. Leisure sales is another area that we put a lot of effort into last year, and that's really educating the call center agents, product managers, and wholesalers from the travel trade all over the world. This, the amount of money spent hosting and visiting these agents or other countries is really quite a limited, a small amount of money, especially if you look at the, the amount of money that's leveraged hundreds, if not thousands, of times on what those people then do with their outreach and the people that they bring here. Conference sales has always been a strong point, except for the last year and a half, where it's usually the strongest in the months of July through November, and the way the economy turned down in the '08, '09 year, where the whole year was off, and then it continued in the first half of '09, '10, that was the strong part of the conferencing. So, in the weaker months for conferencing, which are the, the second half of the fiscal year, the January to June, are not normally strong for conferencing anyway, so even though we started to have a reversal in that time, conferencing again stayed low last year. But this year already, we have come up with the amount of conferencing that has totally outdone what last year's total year was, so there's a real turn in the efforts that our conferencing department is putting forth, and an indication that some of the economy that has been a problem is changing for us. Our last section of the tourism activities is our visitor information services, and we have a year-round visitor center in Tahoe City, and then we do a summer visitor information center at the beach, North Lake Tahoe Beach, across the street from Safeway in the Kings Beach area. Both of those visitations, the number of contacts picked up in the second half of the '09, '10 year, as, as did the general visitation here, and so we saw an improvement again of the number of people coming in. The second part of this triage that I mentioned is visitor services, and the visitor services sponsored by the Resort Association are primarily transportation-related partnerships with TART, Tahoe Transportation District, the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association, California Highway Patrol, and private companies. The services that we provided in '09, '10 was a supplemental funding for TART baseline services, the, with some of the money that was withheld by the state from, from the county, it started shorting, as you all know, the potential for our baseline services. And before we, we could do the enhancements that are our normal opportunity, we felt we needed to, to put funding toward the baseline and maintain that part of the system, and so that's what we did last year, and that's what we're doing this year, but already this year, there is some recovery, so that there isn't as much money of the enhancement transportation going to the baseline services. We have continued with the seasonal enhancements to the baseline services, that's where we start running something on a 30-minute basis rather than the normal year-round hourly service, and we have some earlier and some later routes because of the greater number of employees in the busy times of the year. We also are continuing to fund at a decreasing level because of the success of the, the service, the North Lake Tahoe Express, which is the Reno Tahoe Airport Service, and that each year that we've been involved with that has been a lesser amount of supplemental funds, subsidies, that we've been putting into that. Winter and summer nighttime shuttles is a very important aspect to our getting people out of the cars and keeping them out of the cars safely and to lessen the transportation. So, they run in both the high seasons, winter and summer, and as I said, keep a lot of cars off of the roads that otherwise shouldn't be on the roads at those times of night. Skier shuttles will continue to be something that we provide more of, and supplemental funds too. And lastly, we do traffic management control, and this is during periods of congestion where we actually have companies and the California Highway Patrol out on the roads to help ease- Highway Patrol out on the roads to help ease the traffic congestion at those peak times. The amount of money that we put into the transportation services last year was about $1.38 million. The third piece of the integrated approach to putting the heads on the beds is the making of capital improvements to the tourism-related infrastructure development. As you know, over the years, the Resort Association has invested almost $19 million to help leverage with partners over $150 million toward projects such as the bike trails, beach improvements, commercial core improvement projects, visitor interpretive centers, et cetera. This past year, just under $2 million TOT dollars was approved and/or allocated for things such as the Lakeside Multipurpose Trail, the North Star Community Multipurpose Trail, the UC Davis Historic Fish Hatchery Environmental Center, the Olympic and Far West Ski Museum Planning, traffic calming devices such as the radar signs you see on the road and the pedestrian markers in the middle of the road. In addition, there is the Transportation Center that we've seen here a couple times today, and two new bus shelters in Squaw Valley. The Bus Shelter Program has become a, I think, a very successful blend of Peters, DPW, and the Resort Association. And our plans on that is to, are to move through the shelters, either replacing or building new ones in places where they're needed. During the current '10, '11 fiscal year, the Resort Association will continue with these activities with emphasis on the North Lake Tahoe overall biking plan, planning for the bike trail, missing links, achieving the bike-friendly community stature. That's a national and international program of which we received an honorable mention this year, but this year we will move up and above that honorable mention into one of those multicolored medals you can get when you get near the top. We will move ahead more so with the wayfinding signage, which eases the ability to get around the area. We're going to continue our planning for the performing arts facilities, planning for the existing Tahoe City Fire Station replacement, continue with the funding for the Commercial Core Improvement Project, continuation of the bus shelter replacements, as I mentioned, working with partners to make transportation more seamless as we can afford to do that. We're going to be preparing the surveys and the education materials for the TOT renewal effort that's now coming underway for the renewal of TOT, which expires in October of 2012. And also continue to assist the business associations and others in the promotion of new event establishment. We will continue with our appropriate and strategic marketing. And lastly, we're going to seek out, plan, and promote marquee events that will have an immediate positive impact on the North Lake Tahoe area and all of Placer County. And to demonstrate that kind of event, I'd like to close out with Andy Chapman giving a preview of what the Resort Association, through working with partners, is bringing to North Lake Tahoe in the spring of 2011. Thank you.
Afternoon, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Euler and Board of Supervisors, and welcome to Lake Tahoe. We certainly like to have you guys up here, and it's good having our neck of the woods. Let me make sure that this is all working the way it should. So Amgen, I don't think it's any new announcement. It's been out there for at least 14 days or so. But I did want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your support in this endeavor, and particularly Jennifer Montgomery, Tom Miller, and Jennifer Merchant, and all the NLTRA Board of Directors as well. This was a huge event to go after. In our opinion, it's probably the largest event since the 1960 Winter Olympics in means of promotion, outreach, awareness that we're going to gain. I'll just talk for a couple of minutes about the process, and I'll end with a little bit of a video that demonstrates the upcoming event. We've been in the bid process and discussions with AEG, which is the event organizers, for the last year, maybe year and a half. As you may know, this event was shifted from February to May of last year, and last year was the first time it was in May. And I know it allowed the race, the start of last year's race, from Nevada City to Sacramento, traveled many of the great roads of Placer County on the western side. So we're very interested and looking forward to having them come up here for the eastern side of that experience. We did this process with the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, which is our counterpart marketing firm on the south shore. It was very important for the race organizers and ourselves to collectively portray one bid process for this event. Like I say, the process went on for about a year and a half. We knew a little bit before the announcement on October 7th that we had received it, as contracts had to be signed and negotiated and such. But we did get the race. The quick overview on the race, it'll start May 15th in South Lake Tahoe, somewhere near the state line. It'll travel clockwise around Lake Tahoe one and a half times, which for the first time will bring it into the state of Nevada, and the race organizers are very excited about that. It will then come to Highway 267 at Kings Beach and travel up and over Brockway Summit and end at North Star. The exact race course and where it's going to end and where it's going to climb is still up to the organizers, but most likely it'll climb up and around the Ritz Road with a finish at the North Star Village. Day two will shift over to a start to begin at Squaw Valley and start there, go down 89 to Truckee, a couple loops around Truckee, and then up and over Old Highway 40, go right by Jennifer Montgomery's house there, a little party that morning in front of her, in front of her porch, on its way to Sacramento. So it will travel about three and a half miles on Interstate 80 before it jumps back onto Highway 20 and will make its way to Sacramento. I know you also are very well aware, I'm sure, that day three will begin in Auburn as it makes its way to a Modesto finish that evening. So it is an eight-day stage. The reason why we looked at doing something like this was the economic impact of an event of this magnitude. And there's three things that I really look at of this type of event. It's the promotion and awareness leading up to the event. You know, there's a lot of awareness, there's a lot of hype. It is the largest biking race in North America, and it is one of the largest in the country. One of the reasons, going back a little bit about why they switched the date to May, obviously one was to get to the better weather and do the higher elevations of the Sierra, that's a given. But the second outcome of that was a direct competition with the Giro d'Italia. So it's in direct competition with that race. It happens at the same time. So they have to have a race that pulls the riders that they want. They experienced that this last year, and are very confident that they will continue with that. A little side note, I like this story. Julie Mauer, who is at North Star, was in Italy riding, doing the race last year, and it rained or snowed every single day. And at the end of that race, on TV, the Tour of California would come on. And it was sunny skies, beautiful weather, beaches and mountains, so it was a nice option. So, you know, leading up to the event is a very important economic impact. Obviously, the day, the event itself, and right now we're working on some type of a 10-day countdown to the Tahoe tour, probably starting on Cinco de Mayo, but really building what that 10-day period is for the race to come up here. There's a large gala, there's lifestyle festivals, there's participation races that are going on. We're looking at bringing maybe a women's criterion at that same time, maybe a hand-cranked race. There's a lot of different activities that we're looking at bringing. So during the event, very important as well, heads and beds, as Ron mentioned. And then the long-term benefit and exposure that a bike race of this will bring to the destination. Kind of solidifies us as a biking destination, and to Ron's point about the bike-friendly community, this will be one of the feathers in the cap as we go to approach that higher designation. So one, again, just to end, and I can answer any questions after the video, but again, we just appreciate the opportunity and the support we've had from the board. Book your rooms now for May 15th. I was talking to Alan Heidfeld from the Ritz. He said the day that they announced it, the phone started ringing. So obviously, that's one of the outcomes that we want. And if I can, just a couple, I think it's about a three-minute video. See if I can get to this directly here. I have to do a hi-tech. I have to hold this to the speaker so that everyone can hear. My back's too...
Now, how's this to start? The 2011 Amgen Tour of California, one of America's most spectacular cycling events, is proud to host America's largest cycling event. South Lake Tahoe looks forward to sharing our home and roadways for an unforgettable experience. Let the Amgen Tour begin.
Welcome, Amgen Tour of California, to North Lake Tahoe. Lake Tahoe, the jewel of the Sierra, is a recreational paradise. The adrenaline fuel to Stage 1 finish at North Star at Tahoe Resort will be filled with the pungent smell of fresh pine, sweat, and lytra. The Stage 2 start at Squaw Valley, USA, home of the 1960 Winter Olympics, showcases majestic peaks and medal-winning athletes of past and present. North Lake Tahoe, take your breath away.
The second stage of the 2011 Amgen Tour of California will finish in front of a familiar but always picturesque backdrop, the stately Capitol Building. A quarter billion spectators have filled Sacramento streets since the race first came to California's capital city in 2007, including an estimated crowd of 100,000 in 2010, when British star Mark Cavett...
Hello, I'm Dr. Phil, 2011, and I can tell you that the entire community is excited to welcome the Amgen Tour of California to Auburn, the endurance capital of the world, for a stage start Tuesday, May 17, 2011.
This is Mayor Jim Wright now in Modesto, home of George Lucas and American Feedy. We're looking forward to Amgen Tour of California cruising through Modesto on Tuesday, May 17.
Hello, I'm Mayor Marshall Camina with the city of Livermore, and I'm thrilled that we've been selected by Amgen Tour of California as a start stage host city for Wednesday, May 18. Livermore is home to the oldest wine country in California and boasts over 80 miles of bike trails. Our award-winning downtown throws a great party, so we look forward to welcoming you to Livermore, California.
San Jose welcomes the Amgen Tour of California, Wednesday, May 18, 2011.
The city of Seaside, California, is proud to be the host city of the 2011 Amgen Stage 5 start. The start takes place on May 19 in beautiful Seaside as the race heads down the California coast.
Amgen Tour of California is coming back to Paso Robles this year. I bet it's ready.
Come to Paso Robles, we'll have the wine, we'll have the party. Come to Paso Robles, May 19, for the Stage 5 finish.
The Solvang Time Trial is back. See you May 20th to celebrate the Race of Truth during Solvang Centennial.
Welcome to Claremont. I am Mayor Linda Elderpin, and with me are my fellow council members. We are delighted to be...
I've mentioned to my board that they should be happy. I didn't ask them to do that.
...Tour of California.
See you May!
Good morning, it's Levi Lighthammer. I'm here to tell you that in 2011, Amgen Tour of California, Stage 7, is where we finish up Mount Baldy. Very much looking forward to it.
We are thrilled to welcome the Amgen Tour of California back to Santa Clarita. As a three-time host city, we know firsthand the excitement and energy the race brings. The Amgen Tour of California is a world-class event, and Santa Clarita is going to provide a world-class welcome.
And just in closing, I kind of think back to a conversation I had with Mr. Miller in Squaw a while back about this race when I first started talking about it, and it was "Go get it" was the message. And so thanks for your support. We're happy to have it and look forward to seeing you guys all on the race course next year.
The city of Davis is not too happy about...
No, San Jose isn't either, but... That's too bad. They understand. I mean, we will certainly bid again on portions of it, and we may at some point be in that same situation, but for eight days in all of California, definitely has to move around. And there is some discussion about reversing the course, going from Southern California to Northern California, and potentially as quick as 2013, and we're very keen and already in discussions about a potential finish of what that would look like up here for the whole race, so. Great, thank you. Jennifer.
Yeah, what I'm particularly excited about on this, aside from the fact that it's three days in Placer County, which is exciting in and of itself, but is the fact that here at the lake, we're going to have people here for two nights. I mean, because people are going to have to come for the opening stage, and instead of having the second day start at some remote city that you have to then drive to and check into a different hotel room, people are going to be staying in the area. So we're going to see some additional benefits out of this that, you know, some of these other cities and areas might not have. And that's just so exciting to me because it's going to give people an opportunity to not just see the race, but to spend some actual time here in the lake, because the race, as you know, goes by like, wait, where'd they go? You know, so it's a real opportunity for Placer County and the rest of the folks here at the lake as well. And I'm just, thank you so much for all your hard work on this. It's just a wonderful outcome, and I had my fingers crossed.
Thank you. Yeah, and we certainly hope to drive even more than the two-night stay and everything that we're building, so.
I'm expecting that.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, Mr. Miller. And if I could just add to that, I know that without the Resort Association, this would not have occurred, because they have got all the resorts together. They have, I mean, you have to comp things, you have to organize things, you have to do a lot to capture this. And if we did not have the Resort Association, it would, no chance. So, great work.
And hats off to all of our lodging partners and everybody in the community, because they understand the importance of it, because it is quite an undertaking, both financially and the lodging perspective.
And after watching these snippets, I just wanted to reiterate how glad we are to be able to be working with the county governments that are having a mayor.
Yeah. We could substitute Mark Twain.
All right. Mr. Morlatos, any comments you'd like to offer on behalf of the board?
Thank you. Actually, Alex Morlatos, current Chair of the Chamber of Commerce and Resort Association Boards. Actually, the comment I had was, gee, how far we've come in the six years that I've been on this board, and this is probably my last time officially addressing you as Chair. My, how far we've come as a resort association, as a redevelopment agency that, you know, finally celebrated that golden shovel in the ground today on housing, and not to mention a DPW that's integrated into everything the Resort Association does as well as redevelopment. How far we've come. Thank you. And it's because of you, because of you, because of all of them, and great staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, any other comments by board members? Any members of the public wish to address the board on anything that's been presented here today? Okay, board does have a couple of closed session items we're going to go into, and then it's also publicly noticed that we will be attending a reception this evening at 5 o'clock at 475 North Lake Boulevard's Uncorked, I believe is the name of the business. And then we will be back here tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock to take up regular items of the Board of Supervisors. You're all welcome to come back then, too. With that, we will be adjourning to closed session right now, and council will report what the items we'll take up.
The board will take up the items on page two of its agenda. Item five, there's A, conference with real property negotiator, B, conference with labor negotiators, and item C, which was added at the beginning of today's session, anticipated litigation. Thank you all. We will see you later.
And the board will report out when closed session's done. And the board will report out when closed session's done.